I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll for the Board of Equalization?
Sure. We do have a copy of the Open Meetings Act here.
Thank you.
This is for the Board of Equalization. Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Craft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
President, thank you. And as the clerk announces, this meeting will be conducted in compliance with the rest of the meeting laws. Board of Equalization, I don't see anybody from the assessor's office. This might go kind of quick. Would entertain a motion to approve items A and B? So.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just procedurally, and this might be for the county attorney, we have four people here present in person and three commissioners present on the phone. How does that affect voting?
So, you have a floor. You can conduct business.
Yes.
This is Mike Boyle. I don't know if anybody else can hear it, darn it. Can anybody hear me?
Right.
I can.
We're having some conversation that's not on mic. We need to speak very loudly. A lot of us are wearing masks. The microphone setup isn't great. We got a lot of people trying to listen along. So, any comments we make, we have to make nice and loud, please. Having said that.
So, Commissioner asks if how the voting would go regards to four here and three on the phone. It's my understanding that this body is conducting this meeting in regards to the Open Meetings Act. So, you have a quorum here, physically present, you can conduct business. I will ask Dan to record the votes, even if, let's say it was unanimous, and all seven of you vote for the item. I will have them record four physically present and three voting telephonically. That way, should you receive a challenge on a vote, we can clearly show from the record whether or not the telephonic votes matter. Makes sense, Commissioner?
Yeah. Okay. In that case, I would come back and call for the vote on items A and B on the Board of Equalization. Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle, do you want to vote on items A and B for Board of Equalization?
Yes, I'm trying to vote.
Okay, yes. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes seven to zero for physically present, three telephonically.
Citizen comments? Would anybody like to address the Board of Equalization on an item not on the agenda? Thank you what you are here for. You're the only citizen here. And it's not for Board of Equalization. Very good. Okay, then we will move on to resolutions D through I. G has been stricken. What is the pleasure of the Board? I am not aware of need for executive session, so we could also include adjournment.
Most approved and adjourned.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Rogers. Second by Commissioner Borgeson for resolutions D through I and adjournment of Board of Equalization. Questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero for present, physically present, three telephonically.
Thank you. We will now convene as the Board of Commissioners. Would you please call the roll, Mr. Clerk?
Yes. Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Present.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
All present.
The first thing I would like to do for the Board of Commissioners would be for the Board to consider declaring an emergency. We have two items that should have gotten on the agenda, did not make it. Things are a little chaotic right now. We will probably not be meeting again for four weeks as a Board. And therefore, I would like if we could consider these items at today's meeting. So, the first thing we would have to do is declare an emergency for purposes of adding items to the agenda.
If I make that motion, this is Mike.
Okay. All right, we have a.
How was that?
All right.
Can I connect DJ?
Fine, fine. Then we have a motion and a second from Commissioners Boyle and Morgan to declare an emergency. Could we please vote on that, Mr. Clerk? And then we'll come back to what the two items are.
All right, sounds good. Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes seven to zero for voting physically present, three over the telephone.
There are two items that I would like to add to today's agenda. Mr. Clerk, could you please share with us what they got?
Sure. Dan Ash, County Clerk. So, both of these items were submitted timely. They just, for whatever reason, then get on the agenda. One is an agreement with, for the Douglas County Youth Center with Universal Peace Foundation. Looks like it's just a year-long agreement for yoga instructors at the youth center. And then, the other one is the Sheriff's Office requests review and approval of a group cooperative agreement related information sharing facility used with Moffett Air Force Base.
Okay. I would like a motion to add these two items to the agenda today for our consideration.
I'll make that motion.
Sir. All right, we have Commissioner Boyle making the motion. Commissioner Rogers, second. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero for physically present, three over the telephone.
Thank you. And I should have mentioned, both of these items will show up on the consent agenda in a little bit. All right, back to the agenda, minutes and claims. First item is the approval of the minutes from our March 17th meeting and claims to payment during Tuesday, April 14th. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Motion to approve.
Sir. All right, motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers. Questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
I just wanted to be sure, is that for claims also be?
Oh, yes. Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm going to abstain because I believe, I'm certain there's checks to my company.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan abstains. Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes, six voting yes, three, four physically present, two over the telephone, and then Commissioner Morgan abstaining over the phone.
Thank you. This brings us to the consent agenda where we find items A through J listed, and then we have added two more to that through our emergency declaration. Are there any items in the consent agenda that anyone would like pulled out for individual attention?
Motion to approve consent, A through J, and the two added emergency items.
We have a motion to approve consent agenda with the two emergency items added. Is there a second?
Second, Mike Boyle.
Okay. Commissioner Rogers beat you to it, Mike.
No problem, no problem.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero for physically present voting yes, three over the telephone.
Thank you. We come now to recognitions and proclamations. We have a resolution declaring April 2020 as National County Government Month in recognizing the commitment of NACO. Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes, and to me, this is even more evident than ever this year. Our theme is Counties Matter and what we're going through right now and how counties are on the front line with nationwide reacting to this and serving during this pandemic. I think it's very important and appropriate to pass this resolution today. And if it's okay, I'll read it, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serve more than 3 million Americans and provide essential services to create healthy, safe, vibrant, and economically resilient communities. And whereas since 1991, the month of April has been National County Government Month, an annual celebration of county government. And whereas under the 2020 National Association of Counties, or NACO, President Mary Ann Borgeson's leadership, NACO is demonstrating how counties matter, especially in supporting older adults through family and caregivers. And whereas the goal of this year's NACO initiative has been to have counties reflect on how to better serve older adults, creating age-friendly communities, as well as supporting the caregiving aspect of assisting older adults. And whereas, an example, Douglas County invests nearly $75 million annually to promote the well-being of our residents, including health department programming, general assistance, and by operating the county's long-term care facility and community male health center, all of which serve various aspects of our older adult population. And whereas furthermore, in order to remain healthy, vibrant, and safe, America's counties provide public health, justice, safety, infrastructure, transportation, technology, environmental stewardship, and economic services. And whereas Douglas County and all counties take pride in our responsibilities to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of residents in sensible and cost-effective ways. Now therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby declares the month of April 2020 as National County Government Month and encourages all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to learn about the important role that counties play in the well-being of our communities and to participate in county government awareness activities dated this April 7th day, dated this 7th day of April 2020. And, did I make a motion to approve?
Please do.
Motion to approve?
I will second that.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle, got the second.
And if I may.
Did I hear you better?
You got it, Mike. Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And again, I just want to take this time to thank all of our county employees and leaders that are working so diligently during this COVID-19 pandemic. Again, this again is very appropriate in the theme of Counties Matter this year, and so I just want to thank everybody for their due diligence in what they're doing during the pandemic. So, thank you.
Very good. Well done, thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Mike. Could I make a comment, quick one?
Yes, the floor is yours, Commissioner Boyle.
I want to thank Mary Ann Delaine McBoyle, and we're so proud of her as National Chair of NACO. It has been very important and still could function at a very high level. We're very, very pleased with the kind of response that I've gotten, and I've made some calls to National, gotten some good information. I also want to just take a real quick moment to say that for the people in the state of Nebraska, the number to call for help is 211. Call 211 whether you need food or rent assistance, help with your mortgage, whatever it is. United Way is way out front, and 211 is the number. I'll even refer you to a lawyer, a legal aid, if you need help. So, remember that number if you need help, 211.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Clerk?
One, just for the record, we did get a submitted comment from citizen, Rickie Bolton, an opposition to this item. But if I may say something, I just appreciate, whenever I see Commissioner Borgeson speak, she usually ends with reminding people to check on elderly folks, and I just think it's an awesome reminder that she does every time she talks.
Thank you. Thank you, and I agree. She reminds us all of the compassion that we need as part of this God. Agreed. Okay, could we please vote then on the resolution?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero for physically present, three over the telephone.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The next item is the recognition of a county employee retiring, Karen Guillaume, retiring from the Douglas County Attorney Office after 17 years. I don't believe she's present.
Most approved.
Second.
Okay. Fine. If there are no questions or comments, Mr. Clerk, could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Craft, is that yes? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero for present, three over the telephone. Mr. Chair, if I can go back to the previous item, was the second you or was the second Commissioner?
No, Commissioner Boyle. He wanted to be the second.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Next up is citizens' comments. I doubt that there's many citizens here wanting to share much, however, I think we got some comments and.
What we do, I will let, I do have one that was written, but I can wait till she's done.
All right.
I was going to do this and introduce this citizen. Are we doing it here?
Well, the podium is over here.
Okay.
I believe that's where we should be speaking from.
My name is James Kavanaugh, fifth Circuit Jackson Street, and I am here to speak about the initiative that is underway called Nebraska Mask for Medics and how it represents the best that we can possibly have from local heroes, community volunteers who abandoned together to maybe need the government camp and help our Douglas County Health Center, where we've had 19 cases of COVID-19 positive, 13 residents, five employees. I think that's the latest draft that's been out, including one death, which makes the health center the hotspot of the state of Nebraska. The Mask for Medics Initiative is an example of what we should encourage everybody to do. In discussions before this meeting about protective gear for the commissioners, it was indicated there is none, so I brought gloves for any commissioners or staff that walk in. These are the state-of-the-art M95 masks that are the high end of protective equipment. They're in short supply as are tests, as are respirators, a variety of other protective equipment. So, individuals in the community have stepped up to produce cloth masks, which the CDC has just recently indicated that we should all wear and out in the public. I'm only taking my own momentarily so I can speak clearly, but these are fabricated by volunteers in the community. There have been over 200 sewers who have produced 6,000 masks. We have ordered 500 for Douglas County Health Center staff and residents. These serve as protective gear under normal circumstances. These are if you are in known contact with a COVID-19 positive person. We had outbreaks here at the courthouse. Most recently, one of the county attorneys tested positive and come in contact with scores of individuals who are now in quarantine, including my wife. And that could have probably been prevented had they been wearing masks, had we had adequate tests in time. So, going forward, in order to meet the lack of those things that we've experienced that accelerated the spread of COVID-19, Mask for Medics has stood up on its own without government support to fill that need. We hope that the individuals in the community who see this need come forward to help. We are looking at the Mask for Medics Initiative, represented here today by Jenny Gallagher, a registered nurse who's the executive director, to get the resources that they need in order to fulfill their mission to provide the needed protective equipment to our.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, if I could, folks, if I could, for those, this is County Clerk Dan Ash. For those on the line, if anyone's not speaking, could you please mute your phone or give some contact from people that it's not coming through very well right now? I think it might be because we got some people who aren't on mute. So, if you wouldn't mind, please muting your phone and unmuting them when you want, if you wish to speak. Thank you.
Okay. So, without further delay, I think.
If you don't have a mute, sorry, I apologize, Commissioner Kavanaugh. If you don't have a mute button on your phone, hit star six, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We're all struggling with this new technology, and we appreciate your cooperation. Donations can be accepted for Mask for Medics on Venmo at maskformedics, M-E-D-I-C-S, or PayPal, at PayPal.me/maskformedics, or maskformedics1@gmail.com. You're going to hear from Ms. Gallagher, who has come here at her own expense and has stood this project up with great success to produce needed protective equipment for our community, and I want to commend her and Lou Myers, a local advocate who's been working with her to make this happen. These masks are available here to each of the commissioners and staff here. If you don't have a mask, please take one with you, and we will be distributing those hopefully as soon as they can be fabricated at the Douglas County Health Center to help contain the hotspot spread of COVID-19 there. Thank you, and Ms. Gallagher, thank you, and your Mask for Medics initiative is exactly what our community needs. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm Virginia Gallagher. I go by Jenny. You spell that J-E-N-N-I, Gallagher, G-A-L-L-A-G-H-E-R. I'm a family nurse practitioner, and I'm touching my face. That mask makes you sweat. I live at 2903 State Horn Circle, just outside of Blacksmith, Nebraska. I own my own small business called Joy for Our House Halls. I do medical visit direct to people's homes, except not now.
Ms. Gallagher, real quick. Folks, I apologize. I just need to reiterate, if you're not speaking, please mute your phone. Thank you. Star six if you don't have a mute button. Thank you for your cooperation.
I currently make medical visits via telephone and video conference. Mr. Chair and county board members, I really appreciate the opportunity to share about my project. I had no idea it was going to do this, but I really appreciate the time you've allowed for me to discuss this. This whole idea began with the spread of the COVID-19 pathogen. I noticed nurses and other healthcare professionals running short of PCE all across the nation. I noticed it here at home in Nebraska. As the 11th anniversary of my mother's death approached, of course, I began to ponder and reminisce about her, she taught me to sew. Remind all of that emotional tunnel in my heart, and I just had to do this. I had to do something, and my something was to make masks. On March 21st, I opened a Facebook group, Nebraska's Hands and Feet, with an original goal to match needs in communities to people with the help. My form was going to be making masks. My other people had needs and need help, and my goal was to bring these two together. After a sudden, unexpected viral news segment, our membership for that group grew from all over the nation, even expanded to other countries. Many wanted to join just to see this model. They wanted to take this effort to their own towns, communities, states, and countries. To date, Nebraska's Hands and Feet have received more than 10,000 mask requests, almost 200 isolation-style gown requests, and that's just the parts that we know. Members of that group are taking their own initiative and making their own masks for their own needs, families, relatives, companies, agencies they're familiar with. Within the Facebook group, we've set up different teams that literally just blossomed from the ground up. We have about 200 volunteers currently that are members of the sewing team. At any given moment, probably only about 140 or 150 are sewing masks and giving them shipped and delivered. The others have life. Things come up, and so they're doing the best they can. We had a massive help from Mike McInnis, who right away volunteered to set up some transport team, set up a pickup and drop-off point in Northwest Ho at the Country Sander Quilt Shop. He did that all by himself. He said, "Look, I'm here, I can help." And that's what we have to do together. We have to take initiative to do for ourselves. We have a gown girls team. They are focused just on making gowns. Natalie Richardson is heading that up. Michael Kaitron is making these headpieces for people that have to wear this mask over their ears for hours on end. It's devastating to the skin. It breaks the skin down, it's painful. He made these with his 3D printer. Some people are making facial with their 3D printer. These are just simple, small examples of how our group members are stepping up and using their own talents and skills to make masks for medics. As you can see, the need is great, and it's becoming greater. Nearly 65,000 licensed healthcare practitioners in Nebraska are in desperate need of masks and other protective equipment. Almost 1 million people right here in Omaha and Douglas County need some sort of appropriate face covering. We already know this pathogen is spreading droplets. Science hasn't confirmed that it's airborne yet, but masks can stop the droplet spread significantly. The quote that's being popular right now is, "I protect you, you protect me." So, how can you help? What can you do to help right now? Our needs list has been distributed to each of you. It includes requests for volunteers. We need people that can sew. If you have an old sewing machine in the basement, pull that out and let's get busy. We need fabric, we need funding, we need to optimize our networks. Each one of you can do something. Each one of you has a family member that can do something. All our volunteers are quickly using up their fabric stashes. Today, volunteers have provided about $18,000 worth of fabric to make approximately 10,000 masks, all at no cost to anyone but themselves. In addition, most of these volunteer sewers are laid off, terminated, their businesses closed, or nearly closed. They have no income, and yet they support this initiative. Quality quilter's cotton is not cheap. The fabric in these masks costs money. Our volunteers are wheeling. Our volunteers are willingly donating their yardage, and they will never be reimbursed. Every day, I receive messages, texts, emails, comments, saying they no longer can help make a mask because they have no fabric. Their supplies are beginning to run short. To continue our goal to protect each other and ourselves, we need help from each of you and all of your networks. Omaha and Douglas County can be the leaders in collaborative efforts to protect our residents. Nebraska can lay the foundation and be the beacon of hope for the rest of the country in developing a plan and implementing this plan for developing these processes. We have to come together. We have to band together. We have to use individual skills, talents, and resources for the greater good. The needs list that you have in front of you also specifies ways you can donate. The Masks for Medics initiative can receive funding through Venmo and PayPal. The Venmo address is at masksformedics. PayPal is either PayPal.me/maskformedics, or the email address set up, where you can also contact me if needed, is maskformedics1@gmail.com. There are some statistics provided in this brochure. I'd be happy to take questions if any of you have them. But my question to you, to each of you, what is your talent? What are your resources? What is your skill? Who's in your network? And how can you help? Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Commissioner Borgelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Jenny. The amount of people out there that are doing things just as you talked about are phenomenal. I asked at one point where I could find some homemade masks, and I ended up with well over 30 responses from individuals and businesses actually that are making these. So it warms my heart to see people stepping forward to do exactly what you're talking about, and that is donating their time and talent just to take care of those who are taking care of folks in nursing homes and hospitals and jails. So I thank you, and I thank everyone out there who is doing the same, because again, we're all in this together, and we need to remember that we're not only keeping ourselves safe, but we're keeping each other safe by following all of the recommendations that are set forth, and the latest one being to wear masks. So thank you for what you're doing, and again, just thank you.
If you may respond to the comment?
If I might just move, we have another commissioner waiting to speak as well. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And Jenny, thank you so much. We are seeking resources for you. Clerk Ash and I have contacted the local Rotary that we're members of. We're also board members of the Douglas County Health Center Foundation, and we will be requesting them to contribute. And we've reached out to local labor organizations as well. So hopefully, we can provide you some of the resources that you need to grab these materials. Just on a personal note, my wife, who's in quarantine until Thursday, had secured materials before she went in there to make masks. So she'll be joining Masks for Medics as a sewer as soon as she gets out. I believe that's Thursday. So thanks again for what you're doing. You're truly a local hero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
So I'd just like to say, there are many people, individuals and companies, beginning to do this, because we all see the need and it breaks our hearts. But some of those companies, some of those organizations, some of those groups are limiting their supplies to non-licensed personnel. We are. Masks for medics is trying to, we started that way, like that was what I saw as the original need, and the need has continued to grow to expand to now everyone needs a mask. And so we are not restricting the masks that we provide to licensed personnel or hospitals or agencies. We are trying to meet the needs of everyone. If any of you saw the segment last night about the county hospital, it was heartbreaking. I read between the lines, as they were nice and trying to be not alarmist about the situation, but I could read between the lines of a nurse, and I could hear the tone in their voices and the fear that's associated with this disease and what's happening. We have to stand together, or we're not going to survive this.
I just wanted to let-
If I may, if I may, we're in citizen comments.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe the board should not be engaging in a back-and-forth with the citizen during citizen comments, saying thank you, things of that nature is a piece of fine, but getting into a back-and-forth is not appropriate during citizen comments. I apologize for interrupting and launching the board in that regard.
Thank you for that.
And I apologize, I forgot we were in citizen comments.
Thank you so much, Jenny. Appreciate your sharing with us this morning. Any other citizens under citizen comment? Any other? Commissioner Borgelson, where the person?
Well, I just want to, the health center staff all have N95 masks, so I just want to make that comment known out there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Unless there was someone, I do actually have a submitted comment.
Okay.
I'm not going to read all of it. Well, first, I'll get to that. Anything that, what Ms. Gallagher provided, I'll make sure that's on our website, because since it's on citizen comments, there wouldn't have been an attachment submitted prior to the meeting. So I'll just make sure for folks listening and watching that that'll be on the website today. Then the submitted public comment we got was from Dr. Seet Guswamy. Just said, I'll just read two sentences. Four days ago, the CDC recommended masks for everyone in public. Please offer clarity and guidance to the public and support the CDC message for everyone to wear masks in public if you must go out. Then he just wishes the commissioners the best during this tough time, so I-
I appreciate that comment. Thank you. Okay. The first presentation, the emergency management update, had to do with flooding, and it has been stricken from the agenda. There's no flood going on right now. We have enough other things to worry about. The update from corrections director Mike Myers. We've all, what's the, Patrick, do you know, I mean, we've been given a handout, is that?
I'm sorry, I just got a text from somebody, what's it say?
For the presentation on corrections update. Is there anybody going to be giving that, or are we just going through the handout?
Unless Mike Myers is on the phone, I would just say, just the handout I submitted.
Is Mike on the phone, or anybody from corrections?
This is Mike Myers, I am on the phone.
Okay. We all have your handout. I had a chance to look at it last night, Mike, and I cannot, I mean, it's kind of long, but golly, is it impressive what you guys have been doing, all of your efforts. What would you like to be sharing with the board and the world at this time?
Well, and I do apologize for the length of that handout, but I did want to be inclusive of everything that we've received or that we've done. And I wanted to also make that available to the commissioners, you know, that you're getting questions, as I am oftentimes, about what are we doing in corrections? And when I get those calls or those emails, it's very difficult to respond within the context of one phone call to the whole scope of what we're doing. And so I wanted to cover pretty much everything. I may have left out a detail or two as I was collecting my thoughts. I did actually add a slide to the presentation this morning, so I'll resend that. Maybe just based, basically, we have also received train-the-trainer training on N95 masks, testing for Nebraska medicine. And three of our medical staff have received training to collect specimens for testing in the event that we need to do so within the jail. The, I got, to say to the board and to the public, we are doing everything that we know to do to try to prevent, and if and when prevention is no longer possible to contain. And I think that we have very good plans in place to protect our inmates from each other and to treat the inmates once they, if we do have positive cases. You know, our, my biggest worry has shifted from our ability to, worrying about the 1,100 inmates that are present, to our staff. You know, as they come and go from the facility, they probably actually are at a greater risk than our inmates are currently, because of how we're isolating inmates and all the precautions we're taking. We are blessed in that as of this morning, we have zero positive cases of, in the inmate population, we have zero positive cases with our staff. We have had several staff who've had symptoms consistent with coronavirus. I'm very thankful that all of those tests have come back negative. So we are continuing to serve our vital function as a public safety agency, and we've kind of infused with the guidance of Dr. Poor of her staff and some expertise from Nebraska Medicine. We have become a little bit of our own public health community here as well at corrections. If any of you have any questions, because like I said, this is a lengthy presentation, if you have questions about specific slides, I'd be happy to answer them, either during this meeting, or you can reach out to me separately.
Well, I, we'll try taking questions as we go, and every commissioner here has a hand up. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Mike, thanks for your comprehensive report. That's very well done. Did I hear you say there have been no confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the Douglas County Correction Center?
That's correct. We have zero confirmed cases.
Wow. I mean, that's excellent. You heard earlier that we have 18 positive cases in the Douglas County Health Center, so comparatively, I mean, it's really outstanding that you've been able to get ahead of this. I know that you have been working closely with members of the criminal justice community to limit access to the correctional center, and I just wondered, at this point, have you succeeded in basically closing off the correction center from outside access?
I would say it's probably about, it's very close to 100% closed off. We are still allowing the construction crew that's finishing the renovations to come in. That is a, I admit, that is a calculated risk, not knowing how long this pandemic will last, and not knowing what impact it may have on us inside the facility. We are, the process of isolating inmates with other inmates who came in on the, during the same day or two period that they came in for their first two weeks, creates an inefficient use of our bed space. And having those two last housing units available, they are cell housing units, and so that will be, that would be a, it could be a vital resource for us as we go forward. We did decide against accelerating the construction project, just because the cost came in as fairly exorbitant, and it would only, it will gain us three weeks. Right now, we've made some strides in working with the criminal justice, our criminal justice partners to reduce our population. There is a slide that shows you the trend throughout the month of March. We did drop by approximately 200 inmates from early March to the end of March. But we have had a blip in the last few days. The first part of April, we've gone up about 40 inmates. I'm checking that every single shift to see how we're doing on admissions and releases.
And Mike, just, thank you.
I will go back to our criminal justice department, our partner's attention, if we don't get back down to the level that we were at later last week, but we've had great cooperation with them. There are still a few appointments being done through our video visitation area. Those individuals are temperature-checked and screened as they come into our lobby. They don't have any direct contact with inmates. They don't, you know, they are in a spot where they're isolated from other people, and the video visitation stations are cleaned and sanitized after each use. Those are vital services that need to continue in order to reduce our population, such as psychological evaluations, chemical dependency evaluations, and on occasion, attorney visits as well. But we have largely stood up in a very short period of time, the ability to have video court, video attorney, I'm choosing remote, you know, not happening within the Department of Corrections, remote video court and remote video attorney consultation via phone or via MedX. And so that is, it's almost 100% only people who are working here full-time that are entering the building right now.
Thanks, Mike. That's really good. I appreciate your detail. I just have one last question relative to the availability of protective equipment, particularly masks. Do you have sufficient PPEs and masks, and what's your testing capacity there?
Regarding the PPE, we have, we have, the surgical masks, we have, if we use, if all of the staff wore them once and threw them away at the end of their shift, we'd run out in about 40 days. So we have asked our staff to try to conserve them. We went through an exercise last week of, well, we'd been inventorying it all along, but we got a most updated inventory of all of our PPE last week. And then I consulted with Dr. Poor on, when are we going to need this the most? Because I don't, I didn't want to start using it too soon for everyone in the jail and then run out when the pandemic is at its highest. Looking at the projections locally that Dr. Poor provided, we actually did deploy masks for everyone in the facility on Friday of last week, on April 3rd. We're asking everyone to use their masks for at least two days before discarding them and using a new one. We hope to stretch out our supply for, to 80 to 100 days. We do have orders for additional masks and all PPE and annotation supplies. I'm not going to count on those until I see them, so, because I know they're in such high demand, and we have what we, you know, companies are sending us alleged delivery dates, but I didn't want to count on those until we have them. So we can get through the next, hopefully up to three months with our supplies that we have on hand. Our N95 masks are being reserved for staff who have underlying health conditions, as well as staff who will work in our high-risk areas, including our quarantine unit, which I have several slides in the presentation devoted towards that, explaining that unit. And I want to give a big thanks to Nebraska Medicine for advising us on the creation of that unit. And even bigger thanks, we have 50 officers who now have volunteered to work in that unit, so we have some bench strength in the event that we have people working up there and they're unable to continue for whatever reason. We have some reserves to bring into that area as well. Regarding testing, we do have the ability, we have a limited number of tests in the facility right now. I spoke with Dr. Poor about guidance about using them, and we have, and she does think that she can give us more if we need them, but we're, we, we don't, you know, I don't think there's enough tests in the community for us to just start testing, you know, all of our staff and inmates. But, you know, our staff who have gotten tested have done it through their own healthcare providers, they, we haven't used the tests onsite. They, we haven't used the tests onsite to accomplish that yet.
Thanks, Mike. That's great. You know, I really want to commend you for the in-depth detail that you give us. I hope that we hear the same kind of detail from our other closed populations at the Health Center and the Youth Center. Thanks so much. You're doing a great job. Thank you. And I think masks for medics will be dropping off some masks that'll help you out a little bit. Thanks.
Okay, we have.
Appreciate that.
We have other commissioners present with questions, and I know we're only barely into your presentation yet, but Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, Mike, I want to thank you and I want to thank all the people in the county that are working on this, but I couldn't make the point during Citizens Comments, but it's relevant now. I mean, I want to remind all of us as elected officials that, you know, we're going through this, things are evolving, and I want to remind everybody about how critical it is that what's coming out of an elected official's mouth is trusted. The comment that was made here of Douglas County Health Center being the hotspot in the state is not true. It may be opinion, but I have to reiterate at this point because we've been through this before with the 1918 pandemic and people putting false statements out, and there's mixed messages coming. Everybody's fighting as hard as they can to stay ahead of this. The Health Center is a critical spot. It's in the same spot that every entity of its matter is across the state. But I want to emphasize particularly, we don't need cross messages coming from people in leadership. The public has to trust what's there. They have to know what's fact. So, if you're going to make a statement, make sure you state it's your opinion and not the facts when it's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for those comments. But Mike, I too want to thank you and thank all the staff at Corrections for stepping up and doing what you've done to prepare the facility for this pandemic. I also want to say how proud I am of the 50 staff that have raised their hands and stepped forward to be on the COVID-19 team over at Corrections. That's exceptional, and that just shows the character and professionalism of our staff over there. The other two things I want to point out on slide.
Give them the number dot.
The third, the cover page and then one, two, third slide is that, under your early preparations slide, yeah, you talked about how Douglas County Corrections was the first agency nationally to ask our electronic monitoring, monitoring vendor to increase our inventory of all types of equipment used for community-based monitoring. And as, and Douglas County Corrections was also the first agency nationally to request our video visitation vendor increase our capacity and reduce prices for family and friends of our incarcerated men and women. So, I again want to just thank you and point out how proud I am of all of our staff over there. And this is big. I actually sent that, those two comments to our National Association of Counties because we keep, trying to keep record of what folks have done to address the pandemic within our jails and other facilities, but speaking about the jails right now. So, again, thank you very much for that, and I think that was worth noting.
Indeed. And I, I'd like to piggyback on that real quick, that the fact that your staff was already researching this while it was still contained within China and you were already making preparations, that you were the first ones out of the box getting ready for this, that you saw what was coming. I can't tell you how impressed I am with all of our employees, how well-prepared we are for entering into such a crisis situation, that I'm very pleased with everybody at the jail. I think you were bottoms on top of this as you possibly could have been, and I do appreciate it, respect it. Having said that, we interrupted you in the middle of your presentation, Mike. Is there more you wish to, to be sharing with us?
Well, I do want to thank you, Commissioners, and I have a great team around me who, ideas come from everywhere within this facility, and they've all contributed at this point. And, you know, we have done what I believe are some extraordinary things, but I do want to say there's nothing magical about it. There's not, we cannot, we're not isolated from the virus. I fully expect that we will deal with it either among our staff or inmates before this is all over. We did have our plans in place to try to minimize the impact as much as possible. I'm grateful that we, that we don't have these, that it's not present yet. Every day it's not present, and one day closer to the end of this. But I do appreciate all the support from the County Board, from our, from the whole criminal justice system, the law enforcement community as well. We couldn't have not, we couldn't have accomplished what we've accomplished without everybody's cooperation and contributions from within the department and from our partners, and especially from the County Board as well.
Very good. All right, thank you. Further, further questions or comments during this presentation?
This is Mike Boyle. I'd like to make a comment if I could.
The floor is yours, Mike.
Okay, great. I want to thank Mike. Mike and I have been in close contact on a number of occasions about what's happening at the facility. As a commissioner that works with him so closely, I want to also confirm what you said. He is doing a terrific job, and the morale over there seems to be really working well when a crisis occurs. That's when we find out who's working for us, what kind of people they are. And I'm very happy to say that we really have some spectacular people that are really giving to the community and understand the relationship between their jobs and the people that they're caring for, while they're inmates, they're neighbors and friends and people we know, and other people who've made a mistake. And so, they're, they really have a great attitude about them, but the big word they use is respect. I do want to ask Mike if he would, to briefly tell us about what he's done to bring down the population, people that really could be released, and also the kind of cooperation he's had with the Omaha Police and the judges. I think it's really important that you folks on the phone know this. I don't know if you've spoken about that yet, but it's something that's impressive and something I've been working with him on it. He's done it very quietly, and I think done a great job, Mike, with you folks and all of us, and on the relationships with the judges, the police, and what you've done to try to get people out who should be out.
Absolutely. We've had a few different strategies related to that. And on March 3rd, I requested a meeting of a subset of the Criminal Justice Systems Management Council, basically the representatives for law enforcement and the court and corrections to meet. And we met on March 13th, and that, and everybody came ready to the table with their ideas at that meeting. And so, we, we have been providing the courts updated list daily of individuals who come into our facility that have low bonds or they're here on, you know, low-level, non-violent offenses so that the public defender in most cases and the county attorney or city prosecutor can accelerate the process of either reducing the bonds or RLR-ing the individual and using GPS monitoring, et cetera, or doing accelerated leave. So that, you know, if somebody has a court date that would normally, they'd sit six weeks for waiting for a court date for something that they, they're just going to get time served anyway, let's get them into court. The courts have been very, the county courts have been very willing to schedule extra sessions to accomplish just that. We also have been providing lists of any, any individuals who come into our custody who are, fall into a vulnerable risk category either due to their age or underlying health condition, or the court's consideration to be able to get those folks out as quickly as possible as well. We've had, like I said, other than the last couple of days where our population has jumped up a little bit, it's still in, you know, down, you know, 170 from where it was, and we were down over 200 from our peak earlier in the month of March. And so, we, we just, as you can, I think it's slide number 15, and booking trends, I broke this out for the two, the first 14 days of March and the second 14 days of March, which is really where you can see where the, that's where things started to get real. We started to have our first few cases in Douglas County. That's when the local criminal justice agency started talking on a regular basis. And you can see that those, there's a significant decrease in those two-week periods. And so, we hope to see that hold steady or even lower further. Like I said, we've reduced our population excluding whatever where it's at this morning, but over the, in general, we've reduced it from around 1,300 to about 10,090. And if I, the more room, the better right now. So, I, I'm continuing to hope that we get, can drop it further from that level so that we can spread people out even further if we need to. But, but, you know, I, I thought that this would happen regardless, that as this pandemic hit locally, not only would every, you know, a lot of things in our community slow down or grind to a halt, but hopefully, you know, the fact that the bars aren't open probably is greatly contributing to the fact that there are fewer car accidents, fewer DUIs, the things like that where we expected to see some decreases. I also think law enforcement is, and like probation, et cetera, are giving great cooperation in working with, holding people accountable, but maybe holding people accountable in a way that doesn't include incarceration as a response whenever, whenever it's possible. So, that has also helped to slow the rate of breaches, though.
Very good.
Well, I, I think that, just one quick comment I think that what this demonstrates, and I can't even say 1,000 and something, not 10,000, so, in any event, what this demonstrates, I think, is what kind of a city and a community we live in, that when, when things really go off the rails, that we have people who will step up and are not afraid to do these things. And they were not, they were not done with a great deal of fanfare. And it wasn't that we were afraid to do anything publicly, but it was, it just, get your, get your nose to the grindstone and get this worked out. And everybody of various political persuasions and various responsibilities, prosecutors and public defenders and jailers and all these folks decided what was best for our community, and they did it. So, I'm very proud of our community as well. It's great to be living in a law, to have this, to have a response to a problem and people who do self-purity of safety. Thanks a lot, Mike, for being right at the helm there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, feel free to share this, the, this PowerPoint with any concerned constituents. I am always happy to talk with members of the public, but I also need to keep my focus on what's going on here right now. And it is such a lengthy story to tell, which is why I took the time to include so much detail in this presentation so that this hopefully report can speak for itself and answer any questions and alleviate any concerns of the public.
Very good. Well, thank you. Thank you for that, Mike. Good work. Send your staff the appreciation from all of us for the fantastic job all of you are doing under such challenging situations.
Thank you, Commissioners. I will move it back.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Byers, well, I'll, I'll get this posted on our website, then just, I got, I saw a note from somebody that, and if anyone's listening, we are showing a live stream of this on Facebook Live. You just went to Douglas County, Nebraska's Facebook page. But if you wanted to participate, you have to do so over the phone. But I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to send you the updated version. Like I said, I did add a slide this morning of some things I realized I forgot to include. So, I'll send you that one to post.
Okay, great. I'll make sure I do that one.
Very good. Thank you. The clerk has brought to my attention that we passed one thing in the consent agenda that should have been pulled. We didn't get it pulled in a timely fashion. Item D1 at the Douglas County Health Center was snelling medical staffing LLC. Apparently, we were not ready to move forward on that one yet.
Well, I.
That is correct.
It's correct that we were not ready to.
Yeah, it is correct. We were not ready to move forward. And I, I didn't get a final agenda, so I apologize for not realizing that it was a pull.
Okay.
But I was under the impression, based on communication from yesterday, that it was going to be pulled, and so it is not ready for.
All right. All right.
On, Mr. Chair, also under D, Teresa, there was a pace. Ms. Sexter from my office had mentioned there was maybe an amendment that got included that I'm not sure was brought before the board. We need to.
And now is okay. So, I did communicate with Ellen and the attorney who reviewed that yesterday. There is, you are correct, there is an amendment. We're just going to bring that to the next board meeting. So, that's okay that that went forward.
Okay.
We'll supplement that, and that's fine. But the snelling, that's not ready to go forward today.
All right. Then, if people are okay with it, what I would entertain is a.
Mr. Clerk, please, this is, Mr. Clerk, this is Mike Boyle. Could you please ask people to identify themselves? I have no further speaking. Thank you.
We'll do it going forward. Just, just now, that was Ms. York.
Okay. What would be appropriate then? We don't have any, we don't have any inside, but I think if we just bring up for reconsideration item D1 from the consent agenda, so the first vote, the first motion would be to reconsider item D1 from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to that effect?
No.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers to reconsider this item. Mr. Clerk, could we please vote on that?
Mr. Borgeson.
Yeah.
Mr. Boyle.
Yeah.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Craft.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Four physically present to the over the phone.
So, is the motion then to vote it down or to?
The motion is just to pull it off the agenda. We'll bring it back in a little bit.
Okay. All right. Then, the appropriate motion at this point would be simply to remove item D1 from the agenda.
No move.
Second. Questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Borgeson.
Yeah.
Mr. Boyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Craft. Uh, Mr. Craft. That won't count. Mr. Craft is.
I'm typing on your.
There you go.
Oh, okay. Is that a yes, Mr. Craft?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Four physically present to the over the phone. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have six public hearings. Again, these are unusual times. Typically, we ask applicants to be present when we are considering such things as a liquor license. And, and, I mean, with Willie Feesom, we've had, I don't want him present at today's meeting. We don't want anybody extra. Yes.
It's PJ. Willie did call me yesterday and said he'd really appreciate if we could go without him being present, and I totally understand that, and I think, and when it's appropriate, I don't think we can vote today. Isn't this just a public hearing, or can we then vote?
Yes, we can vote after the hearing is closed.
Okay. Perfect. When that time comes, I'll make the motion.
All right. Ms. York.
Teresa, your county attorney's office, I have two items. One, for the public hearing, it would be preferred from a legal perspective that someone who's physically present make the motion. And the second.
All right.
The reason being, on the prior items, that motion and second is related to your own internal rule. We did have some telephonic folks making the motion in the second, but I think arguably based on the force of conduct, the board relaxed its own internal rule with regards to the consent items. But for the public hearing, there are statutory requirements. The board cannot relax a statutory requirement, and so we'll need someone who's physically present to make the motion in the second. That's the first thing. The second thing is, with regards to the Open Meetings Act, this board has the ability to permit the public and witnesses to appear telephonically. And so, I just bring that up. That is a provision within the Open Meetings Act for whether or not people can participate telephonically, and that is permissible should the board want to let the public and witnesses appear telephonically.
Thank you, Ms. York. Appreciate it. Okay. Is there anybody wishing during this public hearing? This is for a liquor license for Godfather's Pizza at 18101 Chicago Street, manager application for William Feesom. Is there anybody wishing to? Is there anybody wishing to address this board during this public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second by Commissioner Borgeson and Rogers to approve. Questions or comments? Then, Mr. Clerk, could you please vote?
Mr. Borgeson.
Yes.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Craft.
Yes.
Mr. Boyle.
Uh, yes, I wondered what happened.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Morgan.
Maybe if you open the meeting door, it'd be convenient.
Yeah. Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Uh, I'm all flustered. Mr. Kavanaugh, did I get your vote?
Yes, you did.
All right, sorry. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes seven to zero. Four present, three over the telephone.
Thank you. The next public hearing is for another liquor license for West Maple Hotel LLC during business as the Holiday Inn Express and Suites at 19047th Street, and a manager application for Mike Works of Lincoln. Is there anybody wishing to address this group during this public hearing? If not-
This is Mike Works. I'm here for questions if needed.
Wow, I'm impressed. No, we don't have any questions, but I'm still impressed, Mike. Okay. If there are no questions, I will close the public hearing. One is the pleasure of the board.
Most approved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Borgeson. Mr. Clerk, could you please vote?
Mr. Borgeson.
Yes.
Mr. Boyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Craft. Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Four present, three over the telephone.
Thank you. Item C is a public hearing on a resolution authorizing amendments and supplements to transaction documents relating to the county's educational facilities revenue refunding bond series twenty fourteen for Creighton University. Joe, do you want to explain anything to us of what we're doing here? Joe Lorenz. Uh, I think, I think you're over there, Joe.
Here?
Uh, the podium.
Now, when we start reading the item, I'm assuming that means we're opening the public hearing on-
I am opening the public hearing on item C.
Yeah, this first one is just a recommendation that has to come through a public hearing. And essentially, what Creighton University is doing is they're refinancing their two thousand fourteen bond issue, which you're allowed to do in Nebraska five, after, you have to have it outstanding for at least five years. And at the, at that point, anytime you see the official interest rates coming for refinancing, and that's really what this is about, and I don't know, Teresa wants to add anything? She's kind of been at the point.
Uh, I, I would just add that this is not a financial operation of the county. This is a conduit issuance bond. This board has the statutory authority to do a conduit issuance bond. It has done, it does them several times a year. Creighton has been before you, before on this bond, and then a refinancing, they're back again because the interest rates are favorable. I also believe that Josh Meyer is on the phone, although he said he didn't want to speak unless necessary. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Teresa. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Joe, I understand this is pretty much refinancing because interest rates have come down. Do you know, or maybe, is it Josh on the phone?
Yeah.
Know what the current interest rate of the bond issue is and what the new interest rate would be?
I'm going to have to refer on the exact rates.
Mr. I don't know that either.
Is it Josh Meyer? Anyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Josh.
Uh, so this is, as was described, an older deal with Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo is offering to Creighton University a variable interest rate, so it's a LIBOR index, plus spread. And there is a swap agreement associated with this as well. So the answer to the question is, it varies a little bit, but then it is swapped to a fixed rate, and that swap interest rate will stay consistent. So Wells essentially agrees to a three-year term to hold these bonds, and then that term has run. And so this is an extension of another five years. So while the underlying maturity date of the bonds remain July 1, 2035, Wells is essentially agreeing to another five-year hold period. And the interest rate will actually stay the same, but it's necessary to do this financing to continue to roll the debt, if you will, with Wells as the purchaser, and we haven't confused folks, but that's the answer to the question.
Okay, Josh, real simple. What's the interest rate on the current bond issue, and what would be the interest rate on the new bond issue? Just two numbers.
Yeah, so, so the, the answer to the question, I don't believe it actually changed, right? So because the interest rate is based on an index, but then is what we call swapped to a fixed rate, so Creighton is going to keep, because the swap is an instrument that is longer than the bond, although the current period that Wells has agreed to purchase, that there is actually no interest rate movement. Rather, the need for this financing is because of the period of time that Wells initially agreed to purchase the bond will expire, and they were the best offer to continue to purchase the bond for a new five-year period of time. So they're actually, while this is, it is correct to refer to this as a reissuance and a refunding, unlike traditional refunding, this is necessitated by the conclusion of the hold period by the existing purchaser and not necessarily the aforementioned interest rate savings.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments during this public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing. One is the pleasure of the board.
Second.
Can you do that with Creighton?
Yeah, I check with the county disclosure. I'm a board member, I'm just an employee, not a control.
Okay, all right. We have a motion by Commissioner Borgeson and seconded by Commissioner Rogers to approve item C. Questions or comments?
Uh, before the, this is Mike Boyle. Before the vote is taken on the, on the web, my, my copy of the agenda showed this item was stricken through. Is that back, was that removed? It seems like it was removed from the agenda.
On our, Mike, on our agenda, item D is stricken through, but we are on item C.
I'm sorry, let me, let me put my phone back so I can hear you, and then I'll, I'll react to it in just a second.
So, uh, item, Commissioner Boyle, this is Dan Ash. Item C was in cat, that, that's the one we're on. That was not stricken, but that, as you noticed, item D is a dog. That, that has been stricken, but we're on item C right now, the Creighton University refunding bonds.
I'm sorry, I, I shouldn't be drinking my breakfast anymore. I'm sorry, I'm a little, I'm looking down on D as in David, as opposed to C as in cat. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? The, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Borgeson.
Yes.
Mr. Boyle. Mr. Boyle?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner-
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Craft.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Uh, last call, Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes seven to zero. Four physically present, three over the telephone.
Item D was stricken from the agenda. It brings us to item E, which is a public hearing about providing additional budget dollars for salary adjustment account and transfer budget dollars that set aside and salary adjustment account for future salary increase, increasing the budgets for corrections, the election commissioner and public defender. Joe, you want to add anything else?
Yeah.
Sorry about that, Mr. Lynn. Everyone, just a reminder to please mute your phones. Thank you. Star six if you don't have the mute button.
Uh, I just gave the clerks a handout, which hopefully will get hashed.
Was it any different than what you gave me earlier?
No.
Okay, I did give them copies earlier.
Yes, I have a copy. Okay. So, suppose you're looking at that, just a couple of quick financial updates that will tie into this budget supplement. You know that we collect property taxes twice a year, and we just had the first property tax collection that came over the year on, on March 31st.
Mr. Sarkisian, you might speak up a little bit. I apologize.
Yeah.
No, Mike.
A lot of people are long ways away trying to hear you.
Okay, so we had the first property tax collection of the year on March 31st. And as you know, property tax is the primary revenue vehicle of the county. And so I was following that closely with the help of dot com, and I got a report yesterday that as of yesterday, just under fifty-two percent of the annual property taxes for the county have been collected. And when we model this, we usually model for the first one, it would be fifty-two and a half percent. So we're very, very close on our collection, which is a good thing. Uh, you know, as I was watching, this was very interesting. There, a lot of people did pay on the very last day this month more than usual, but they did pay, which is the key part. So, uh, you know, the county collected close to fifty million dollars last week, which, you know, helps us in keeping our operations running, and we'll be in good shape. And then the next property tax is due right around August 1st, I believe, and we'll see how that one goes. You know, the longer the economy remains shut down, the more pressure there is on people to pay a significant amount of taxes. But as of right now, things are good. And I can also tell you that I was working with the City of Omaha, as given what's going on with restaurants and retail sales in general, the property tax was very important as a primary source of revenue for the City of Omaha, so. But we have pretty good news on that front. Secondly, related to the coronavirus, what we implemented last week, working again in conjunction with the city, is that we, within Oracle, we assigned a specific code zero eight four four to be used for incremental expenses with COVID-19 activities. So what this allows us to do in Oracle, to track all our COVID-related expenses across the county, all the different departments, and also across the city, so we'll be able to pull the report now that shows how much incremental spending we're spending on COVID-19, and will also help us on a go-forward basis to potentially recoup some of these expenses that are, that were incurred from this, either from PIVA or through the CARES Act. So there's a fair amount of government funding out there right now, that's federal government funding, the stimulus and, and these things related to COVID virus that we think we're going to be able to collect money and offset some expenses against. So we put that mechanism in place to be able to track that spending amount.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Two quick things, Joe. You have a county administration budget item of eighty-one thousand dollars underneath parentheses, position funded by private corporation. What's that?
Yeah, look, okay, let me go to those, to those sheets. I just wanted to give you a couple of how to take, take you through those three sheets, and I will get to that.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
So, you know, twice a year, we ask for a budget supplement. We're a little late this year, given everything that's going on for the first one, so we'll do another one probably in late May, just to make sure all the county departments have adequate funding to get through our end of our fiscal year, which is at June 30th. So this supplement was primarily put together before the most significant parts of the coronavirus actions hit. So it, it has a couple of things in it, but a lot of it's going to be in the one in May. But this primarily puts into the department budgets where the salary increases that were approved by the county board and really took effect January 1st. So this will increase everybody's budget to reflect those salary increases. And so the note there is that in terms of the salary increases, we had to add an extra million dollars into the county budget. The original budget, a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the salary adjustments are, were considerably in excess, excess of that, primarily driven by contract settlements that went on, you know, like the corrections contract settled about a year later. And we do have, there's a lot of retroactive pay, and so that eats up the salary adjustment account, so we have to add an extra million to that. And then in terms of, we have revenue offsets related to grants in some departments, but on the first sheet, you can see, well, it's the net summary of budget increases, we added a million dollars for salary corrections. We added three hundred thousand dollars, which was the initial payment for a new security equipment system for corrections, which is really going to be implemented over the course of about eighteen months, and could cost up to about three million dollars. Also in here is the election commission, which at your last meeting came and asked for a hundred thousand dollars to do the mailing that everyone received. That really gives voters the right and ability to vote by mail, given the current situation. And then they're adding one additional employee for a couple of months this year, but then I'm going to put it through. And then the public defender also came in, this is directly related to COVID-19, and requested increased their budget to purchase new cabinets and blue ray players for their staff so that they would be able to work remotely. So if you look at that, the total amount of net budget increases is a million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine thirty-eight, which, you know, we have about a four hundred million dollar budget, so this is, you know, less than a half percent of revenue to the overall. So the second page, it just shows the salary adjustments, and you can see what a big component the retro pay was, over seven hundred thousand dollars. So make the total salary adjustment, two point six million. Again, and you can see the largest component by far was correction, where we basically hit a twelve-month settlement, and we finally got through our contract, which is a significant amount. And so you can see, if we add the million dollars that we're requesting, we would have a balance in the salary adjustment account to get us through the rest of the year of about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, which we think will be a full year, because we don't think any of the major additional contracts will be settling if we're paying out at fifteen thirty. And then the third and ten last page is the budget adjustments that have revenue offsets. The county attorney has some people involved in a few grants, that they, they use the grants to offset two hundred and ten thousand salaries. Same thing with the, with the sheriff. They have some grants that, that they're offsetting a hundred and sixty thousand, sixty-seven thousand dollars in with the salaries. And the next one is county administration, which was Commissioner Kavanaugh's question. That is adding to the budget Kim Harakati's position within administration, which for this fiscal year is being funded by a grant from the Sherwood Foundation.
Okay, so is that a one-year grant, or is that an ongoing grant?
Uh, my understanding it was just for the fiscal year. Patrick is-
So that's Patrick Bloomingdale, county administrator. So that represents one half of fiscal year, beginning on January 30th, and that's the salary benefit. This whole salary not going to benefit for a full year, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. This whole salary not only benefits for a full year of $125,000. So that 81 gets us through first six, well, it gets us from January 1st to June 30th, salary benefits from the Sherwood Foundation.
Okay, so Patrick, this is a one-year grant or an ongoing?
Yeah, no, it's not ongoing. It's just a seed, seed line.
Okay.
Just for that six-month period.
Okay, so the grant portion is 81,000.
That's correct. So next fiscal year, starting July 1st, the county will pick up the entire salary at 125, plus whatever the 35% is.
And we received an $81,000 check from Sherwood Foundation.
Okay. Just one other thing, you mentioned that there could be part of this picked up by the federal relief for COVID-19. And I think you indicated the, on the first page, the public defender portion of that, the election commissioner and the corrections things, I mean, the election commissioner is obvious vote by mail, mailing is predicated on COVID-19 concerns that we have. Would that qualify conceivably?
Potentially. If you look at the way the CARES Act is written, the expenses have to be incurred between March 1st and December 30th. And if you look at the definition, it's kind of vague, but it says that it's, let me give you the exact term. It says necessary expenditures for public health emergencies. So, and it has to be an unbudgeted expense. So that is something that we will explore, given that we kind of did this and incurred that expense before we really filed the application for the money. That's what we have to really look at and see, is this really only cover items that you haven't made the expenditure on yet. But the great thing about the, not the FIVA, but the CARES Act, is that the federal government, given that it's a stimulus, it will be upfront money. So if you send this in, and we have till April 27th, we'll send our list in. And they, and the ones that are granted, if they approve, they will send us a check for within a matter of a week or two. And we will have that money upfront to spend on these budgets.
So the corrections, security equipment, would that be related?
I think, I think that, you know, that we haven't really spent the majority of that and we've just got to have a little, like, security deposit on it. And it's not in the budget yet, it's not in next year's budget. So that would be one that I would certainly think we would put on the application and have covered, yes.
Good.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to add that we need to, and we will make a strong argument for, you know, anything that we think just can't be tied to COVID, we're going to tie it in there and give it our best shot to justify it. And I agree with Joe, I think that we can justify that. And there's a lot of other things that I think that.
And that brings up a point, and we've had discussions on this. So there's a growing number of people that are going to be taking family leave under the Family Leave Act because of COVID-19. Could those conceivably be recouped in the same manner?
That we have to look at. And the issue there is that it has to be an incremental unbudgeted expense. But if you're taking family leave and that's not increasing your total payroll expense, then the question is, if you don't have an increased expense, is it reimbursable or not? And we have to do more research on that.
Okay. I think that, you know, part of the CARES, at least for the private sector, is that we will reimburse you for personnel costs that you're out of pocket during this emergency. I don't know if that covers public sector as well, but obviously if people are compelled by COVID-19 to take family leave, they're not able normally to perform the full array of duties that they would have if they were, you know, coming to work.
Well, what we're applying for under the CARES Act is something called the Coronavirus Relief Fund, that's been funded at $150 billion for state and local governments. Each state is guaranteed that they will receive at least $1.25 billion from the federal government. And to get that, there's two ways you can get it. For local governments with less than 500,000 people in the population, that amount, you have to, most municipalities have to work with the state. But if you're a municipality or a local government with a population of over $500,000, which Douglas County is, you can go directly to the federal government if they request, and that's our plan.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments?
No, I answered it. So these charts just kind of lay out, so this is the public hearing. In order to increase the county's budget, we need to have a public hearing. We ran the information in the daily records, so it's been published. And with that, I would ask if there's no more questions, that we propose a public hearing and take a vote to approve this one.
Okay, we'll ask one more time, any more questions or comments during the public hearing? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Most approved.
We have a, we have a motion from Commissioner Rogers, second from Commissioner Burrisson to approve item E, the budget adjustments. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Burrisson. Mr. Boyle. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft. Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Board voting physically present, three over the telephone.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. We have three remaining public hearings, all coming from Environmental Services. Is Doug Cook on the line?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I am.
Okay, good. Then we will start with item F, zoning text amendments requested by Constructors Inc.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Cook, you are Douglas County Planner.
Okay, what are we doing here on item F, a construction batch plant?
Okay, so these proposed zoning regulation text amendments are applied for by Constructors Inc., who are to clarify county regulations on batch plants. They are based on comments, concerns, thoughts, and issues that have been raised over the past few months by staff, public, and the planning commission. And I would point out that I will be referring to page numbers in my, in my talk here today, which are found in the bottom right corner of a paper copy of the PowerPoint presentation, which you should all have. So staff had previously identified the current batch plant regulations as needing to be changed as part of the ongoing zoning regulation-wide review and revision process. These proposed text changes do not change the fact that a batch plant would still require a county-approved special use permit in the agricultural district. At their March meeting, the planning commission on a four-to-one vote recommended following that changes. This involves deleting some text in one place, followed by, followed up by adding some text in another place. So proposed to be deleted in its entirety is Article 5.169, supplemental use regulations, temporary uses construction by batch plant. This is on page three. There are two carryover provisions to the proposed new verbiage, and those are: a maximum 12-hour operation and a map provided showing the route maps, which must be approved by the county engineer's office. So page four, five, and six. What is proposed to be added then to Article 5.06 is the following: construction batch plant, subject to the following requirements, and supersede any other portions of the zoning regulation. This will be on page four. So point eight, applicant shall provide the locations of job sites and a map showing the proposed routes to be used to each site to the environmental services department. Page number five, hours of operation shall not exceed 12 hours per day, and the applicant shall fully identify the specific 12 hours. From page six, the applicant shall provide a calendar year timeframe where the batch plant will be operating. So to summarize, the planning commission recommends on a four-to-one vote to both two text changes be approved.
Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any comments, questions during this public hearing?
This is Mark Kraft, and I just want to make sure those hours are daytime hours of operation.
Mr. Kraft, what would be dealt with through a specific special use permit, which would be on a case-by-case basis? And that verbiage, the 12-hour verbiage, is in the regulations that present?
Okay, well, I knew that. I just wanted to make sure they were daytime hours. I'll handle those as you said on a case-by-case basis, thank you.
Okay, sir. Any other questions or comments? Then I am going to close the public hearing.
Hold on, hold on, this is, hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the, this is Steve Rucker. I couldn't quite tell, Commissioner, if you were asking for public comment, but it appears you are, so I would like to appear and offer comments on this matter.
All right, this is your opportunity to do so, Steve.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Steve Rucker. I'm an attorney with Frasier Stryker in Omaha, 409 South 17th Street in Omaha. And I'm here representing a citizen and taxpayer of Douglas County who has asked that, that this person has asked that they not be identified. And I realize that that's not necessarily a popular choice, but it's one that I obligated to respect as counsel. Let me begin by providing some procedural background as to what brings us here today. This matter initially came to the planning commission as a request from G and G Manufacturing Company, which is the owner of the subject land, for a special use permit for a temporary batch plant. The temporary batch plant had already been in place since April of 2019, when this matter came before the planning commission. Now, just to level set the conversation a little bit, I know that the commissioners are familiar generally with temporary batch plants, but they are intended to be just that, temporary, and typically they are put in place to serve particular jobs, large construction jobs, like you might see in the West Farm area of western Douglas County, for example. Well, I appeared before the planning commission on February 12th at the 2020, at which time there was a temporary use permit that was being sought, as I mentioned. And I made a number of comments, and those comments are summarized in a chart that's attached in the materials to my March 11th, 2020 letter. I won't go through those because the board has those in front of them, but I will highlight a few of the matters that I highlighted for the planning commission at that time. First of all, I pointed out that the existing regulations had no provision for renewal of a temporary permit. And secondly, that the site was much larger than the regulations allowed, 12 acres versus five. And also that the construction locations that the plant was proposing to serve, over nine miles or more away from the site, not one mile as prescribed in the existing regulations. I also pointed out that the applicant's own application stated as follows, and I quote, "This plant location will allow Constructors Inc. to competently bid on future municipal and private paving projects in and around Douglas County." Clearly, in, close quote, "in intent to make this temporary plant be permanent in nature something that's soon to be prohibited by the zoning regulation." As a result of pointing out these deficiencies with the application, the board laid over the matter until the March meeting. But instead of coming back to consider the existing temporary use permit, the planning commission simply changed the rules and brought forward the zoning text amendment that is now before this board. They eliminated the requirement that the plant not be located within 600 feet of its developed residential use. They eliminated the requirement that the facility not be more than one road mile from the job site, and that duration of the plant's operation should not exceed 180 days. Parenthetically, during the Q and A by the planning commission at the March 11th meeting, a question was asked by one planning commissioners, well, could the permit be as long as 10 years? And the answer that was given was yes, it could be. Way to place, the planning commission adopted second Article 5.06C. Mr. Cook has prescribed what that provides for, but all of the limitations that were in the prior zoning requirements were eliminated. And it is our position that this requested revision is not permissible legally for a number of reasons. First, under Section 1.04 of the Douglas County zoning regulations, the regulations state that any amendment to the zoning regulations shall be consistent with the county's comprehensive development plan. That requirement is also provided in Nebraska revised statute 23-174.01. What is the current development plan provided? The current development plan identifies this area, the subject area, for agricultural and agricultural resource extraction, that is sand and gravel, and not the creation of quasi-permanent batch plant. Now, as I said, this permit began in April 2019, the batch plant has been there all along, not necessarily operating throughout that time because of construction season courses shut down during winter months, but still there, operating or able to operate without a permit. Development plan further does not anticipate or allow the creation or extension of a general industrial district in this area. And clearly, a batch plant, a permanent batch plant, would only be located in a general industrial district. The plan itself states that due to a lack of infrastructure services to this area of western Douglas County, there will not be expansion beyond the existing footprint unless toll municipal services are provided in that area. Well, that's the first point. This text amendment is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. There are additional problems that I want to point out in addition to the problem with the comprehensive development plan. First, the text amendment completely circumvents the intended temporary nature of batch plants because, as I noted, 506, the proposed 506, does not impose any time use restrictions at all. It also allows for a temporary batch plant to be operated in any area, though it couldn't be near a school or a home for an indefinite period of time, much beyond the 180 days provided for in the existing and prior regulations. It also allows the temporary batch plant to haul its material anywhere, not just to a nearby job site, but anywhere within Douglas County and actually beyond Douglas County. That actually creates a loophole in the zoning code because, as I said, permanent batch plants are allowed, and only in GI, general industrial districts. And so now we have this perfluous regulation, why would anybody utilize the permanent batch plant requirements when you have the opportunity to create a temporary plant and get a continued extension under the provisions of this new proposed text amendment? Third, this proposed text amendment provides no oversight or continuity of any kind as to whether a batch plant can and should be granted. Instead, any special use permit would be by its very definition under this proposed regulation ad hoc. So there's no way for an applicant to know what the rules are when the applicant applies. Likewise, there's no way for a nearby property owner to know what rules should apply to temporary batch plants that may be located near them. So when property owners lose their blinds, which they had before under the existing regulations, that a batch plant will not be developed in a neighborhood under the existing zoning regulations. So the request that we have is that this zoning text amendment be rejected, and I will stop at this point. I'd be pleased to answer any questions that the members of the commission may have. Thank you.
Do we see that again?
We don't know if the.
We have an anonymous person coming forward, I call it?
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Boyle. No, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
Please, for Boyle.
You should go ahead and explain that, Commissioner Burrisson. Yes, Commissioner Burrisson, and I apologize if I'm trying to watch you on the face sheet, this is a little hard to catch up. Yes, my client, you know, asked that it's her identity not be presented to the board and. and while I recognize that, that is unusual, I am obligated to abide by that request, and that's why I'm appearing here on that citizen's behalf. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
My Boil, I, it is unusual, but I respect the need to be anonymous for some, for a reason, I suppose, but I think that the arguments that are being raised to reject this application are quite compelling. I was very interested in this when I saw this. Let me ask you, and maybe it's the planning department that should answer this, but what was the objection that did not conclude the unanimous, or what did the, not necessarily who, but what was the objection of the planning board member who voted no? And I'll mute my phone then.
Commissioner Boyle, this is Doug Cook. The commission member who voted no did not vocalize his reasons at the meeting.
Okay, well, I would like to ask, Ms. Cook, what is the initial, what is the recommendation of the department on this change?
Staff had, staff had recommended in favor of the proposal.
And Theresa, your Douglas County Attorney's Office.
Theresa, one moment.
How do you, you can detect, use that word, how do you explain the contradictions that Mr. Bruckner has brought up with what this does to the rules, that it changes everything? If someone goes out there and gets a temporary plant suddenly there, they can stretch it into something permanent that was not intended, where the original permit was granted for the temporary operations?
The proposed verbiage says that, this will be on page five, it talks about it can only be open 12 hours per day, and the applicant must provide those 12 hours. And the applicant shall provide a calendar year timeframe for the batch plant may be operating. That limited to somewhere within a 12-month January to December calendar. And I would note that any special use that applies for this type of use does have to provide those 12 hours and those certain number of months.
As a practical matter, wouldn't the months be, you know, like May to September or something like that? I mean, as a practical matter, so how, because I'm a permanent, I'm really very confused about this. I need to disclose that I have represented someone who does asphalt, so I may have to name those all over. I'm not sure at all because I don't have an interest now, but I'm just curious, this turns a batch plant in my book into a permanent site? That's what I'm confused by.
No, I respectfully disagree, Commissioner Boyle, because they have, the county will set.
Is this Mr. Cook speaking?
I'm sorry, Doug. Could you please repeat that? We were trying to figure out who was talking.
Okay, this is Doug. So the county threw a specific special use permit application, sets the 12-month period. So you have a special use, and if the 12 months that we give you expires December 1st, your permit expires December 1st. You're done. If you want to reapply next year, the next year, you come back, you reapply, you pay the fee, the neighbors are notified, the sign is closed. All the hearings are held.
Okay, this is Mike Boyle again. I see a batch plant, as I described, as I understand it, and described by Mr. Bruckner is that, and you tell me if I meant correct, that a batch plant is put together so that it can service some construction area nearby. So I don't really get it if a batch plant suddenly does this work, and then what are they, where are they working after they finish the project nearby? If it's not nearby, doesn't that make it not a batch plant? I don't get it.
No, it would continue to be a batch plant, and part of a specific special use permit for a location is that batch plant operator has to provide to us the projects that they're working on and how they're getting there. So we would have knowledge of that, and those sites have to be approved by the county engineer's office, and, excuse me, the drive to those sites has to be approved by the county engineer's office. If next year a specific batch plant doesn't get a contract to do work in Douglas County, it's highly unlikely they will come to us for a special use.
Can somebody, excuse me, Doug, this is my last question. Can somebody please tell me the neighborhood that's involved in this? I've tried to read because I'm not sure that I understand fully. Where is the neighborhood, and how are the neighbors being affected by this?
Okay, Commissioner, this is Doug again. So we have somehow discussed both agenda item F and G. F that we're talking about today is just a text change to the zoning regulation. It has nothing to do with a specific site. That is the next agenda item.
Are you okay for the moment, Mike Boyle?
No, that's okay. I'll just keep listening. I'll try not to ask too many questions.
Fine, thank you.
I'll be back, so I'm sorry. Okay.
All right. We have two speakers waiting here, Theresa.
One of them, one of my concerns is already addressed, and that simply was I was going to direct the board to the fact that this is a public hearing on item F only, which is the amendments itself. The special use permit for the particular batch company is actually a separate separate hearing. It's for G, and it would be coming up next. So I believe what's before the board is whether or not to make these amendments that Doug has proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes, and Mr. Bruckner, you're still on the line?
Good, yes, Commissioner Ayer.
Thank you. You know, in reading through this, you know, it appears that in plain language, the position that you have is that the neighborhood is not appropriate for this batch plant. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Only in part. The concern is broader than that. As I said, the text amendments are not consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the text amendments would allow temporary batch plant to take on the character of a permanent use subject only to an ad hoc approach by the planning commission, whatever they decide to put in place, because the permits can be granted over and over and over again, and of course, the trucks that emanate from that plant can go anywhere and serve any construction project, and that's simply not consistent with the comprehensive plan, but not consistent with the notion of a temporary batch plant permit.
Sure. And, you know, I understand your client confidentiality that you've asserted, and I respect that. But is this a batch plant in an area that would affect your client's property?
If I may, we're on item F, which is zoning text amendments. The batch plant is item G, and we'll get to that public hearing in a minute. I would like to keep the discussion on the proposed text amendments, not on the specifics of the batch plant.
I understand that, Commissioner Ayer, Mr. Chair, but the answer is no to Commissioner Kavanaugh's question.
Okay. I guess, you know, relative to the question that you raised, Mr. Duda, if we don't grant, and maybe this is a county attorney question, if we don't grant F, is G then moot?
I think, sorry, Theresa, your county attorney's office, perhaps. I think that F, I think G is consistent with F, and so I think G may have to go back for additional consideration should F not pass. But I would defer that to Doug. He's more familiar with the nuts and bolts of G, but I think that may be the case. But we need to take the public hearings one at a time for the clarity of the record.
I appreciate that. Mr. Cook, if you understand, can you hear?
I can hear you, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Okay. What I'm asking is if F is not granted, then does it make G, as it stands on the agenda, moot?
Excuse me, this is Doug. I agree with what Theresa said. We would have, I think it would have, G would have to go back to the applicant and see if he can meet, well, to the, back to the planning commission.
That's, you're telling me you don't know, is that right?
My name is Luke Avrachek. I'm an attorney, and I represent Constructors Inc. I would like to be given an opportunity to be heard on this matter, the board of Florida as well, if I may.
Could I ask you to identify yourself again, please? I didn't catch the name.
Yes, sir, I apologize. My name is Luke Avrachek. I'm an attorney, and I represent Constructors Inc. of 1815 Y Street in Lincoln, Nebraska.
Lou, would you mind spelling your last name for us? I appreciate it. This is Dan Schkowert.
It's L U K E, and V is in Victor, A, V is in Victor, R I C E K.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Avrachek, my question is kind of procedural, that if the board does not endorse the planning commission's resolution contained in F, then is G off of the agenda? Do you have to have F approved in order to proceed with G?
To whom would that question address?
Mr. Veracek, I guess it's to you.
Okay, well, I think that's more appropriately probably for the county attorney's office. Generally, I would think from a practical standpoint, from my client's perspective, the answer would probably be yes. But, because I think what happened here, and I think I have a representative of my client on the phone as well, and if he disagrees, I'll let him ask him to do so, to China, but I think that the application for, I mean, item G, I think the application was done in anticipation that this textual amendment that Mr. Cook was talking about was going to be adopted, and it was to conform to what would go to be an anticipated change in the regulation.
Thank you.
So if that change doesn't take place, I think probably the answer to that question would be yes, although I would defer to the county attorney's office, I'd give the county a big old yes.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah, it might be good to get an answer to that question, and I'd also maybe like to, you know, get an answer from somebody on the board relative to their vote. I particularly mentioned Mr. Levy, who was the sole nay vote on this relative to that. I mean, this is, you know, kind of opaque planning law, and you're deep in the weeds now, so it would be good to get as much information. Unless this is extremely time sensitive, it might warrant a layover so that we can get a little more information.
Commissioner Borgson.
Doug, you, timing wise, we've been working on this for how long now?
Since, Commissioner Borgson, since January. And even prior to that, back in November, when staff was working on a proposed part of the zoning regulations, indeed some additional work, this came up. So, and to go back to your comment, Commissioner Kavanaugh, if F is not approved, the G is moot, G would be moot because our current regulations state the facility is located no more than one road mile from its job site. So I hate to confuse this agenda item with the next agenda item, but the job site on item number G is way more than one mile from where this batch plant is proposed to be located.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, further questions or comments about item F, the zoning text amendment?
Again, this is Luke Avrachek. I would like to make a couple remarks, if I may, before the vote is called.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioner. A lot of what Mr. Bruckner said, the premise in a lot of what he said was that this is going to be a, quote unquote, quasi-permanent batch plant, and for that reason it would be inconsistent with the comprehensive development plan, and this textual change would. I would respectfully disagree with that. This is not a moot, for the reasons that Mr. Cook articulated. There are restrictions here that were added by amendment at the March 11th planning commission meeting that can make it so that it's not a permanent batch plant. And I think it is a little bit impractical and unrealistic to say that a batch plant only services one job for one project, and that's it. A lot of temporary batch plants service more than one project location, and to say that a batch plant needs to be located within one mile of one specific project, as I pointed out to the planning commission in March, that would mean that you either have temporary batch plants everywhere, or you have them nowhere. It's one or the other. That's just not a practical thing. So I think this textual change deals with the realities of construction and what it is to operate a temporary batch plant. So there is that calendar timeframe, and I would say with 100% respect to the confidentiality issue that Mr. Bruckner had identified, as I said back in March, as a attorney, I can appreciate that confidentiality, I respect it, but I also pointed out, and I probably can do as archrally as I could have or should have, Mr. Bruckner can only tell you what he's told by his client, and he has to it by a lifetime, which isn't, as he's pointed out. And I agree with that. That's 100% correct. It very well could be to, and Mr. Bruckner may have no knowledge of this because of what he was or was not to indicate to him by his client, but it could be that if we knew the identity of that client, there might be a revelation as to what the actual concern here is, and that identity is missing here, and I think we're reaching an accurate picture as to what the objection may in fact be.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, again, with that, I think there's a faulty premise that this is a temporary quasi-permanent batch plant. That's not the case. I respectfully disagree with that. Thank you.
Thanks.
This is Mike Boyle. I'm curious, why not, I mean, why not just apply for a permanent operation? I mean, if that's where this all leads, and I'm bothered by the changing, what seems to be the changing of the code to allow something to fit, this square fit into the round hole, you know? And the other thing, too, that's quite bothersome is that the operation, as I'm looking at these documents, the hours are limited to six in the morning and six at night, and the picture is not very flattering, too, in an area that's near, you know, kind of a troubled area in the sense that the golf course had a hard time. I just really, I don't want to necessarily reject it, but I think it's, with Kavanaugh, with that idea about laying it over, it's difficult. I mean, I've got everything on the internet, I could, you know, the pictures and all the rest of it, but I'm really bothered by this. It does seem like it's turning a temporary batch plant into what could be a permanent one, if that's the case. You know, when it's just applied for a permanent one, I don't get it. I, you know, like I said, that's where I am. I, if Kavanaugh's thinking about or others, I think, I don't know whether we need to lay this over or not, and I know that it's bothersome to confuse this with the next one, but that's, we have so many nice rules, and we can't talk about something that might have slipped right before us. We should remind me, because I think it makes a difference how it affects the neighborhood out there, the potential to further develop. If you've got a permanent batch plant, which you sound like this is probably going to transition, I don't know why you would let it go. So I don't know that we need a layover, but if someone makes the motion, I probably wouldn't vote for it, just need more information, but I'm inclined to reject this.
Well, I would remind people that we are still in the public hearing. Commissioner Borgson.
Well, I don't see it as that way, Commissioner Boyle, and I actually think that we've worked very hard so that it not be a permanent, but that it be on a yearly basis for these permits, which I think is a way better way to go. I think staff's done a lot of work and good work in making sure that, again, we and good work in making sure that, again, we have a little bit more control and say on a yearly basis about these batch plants. So, I, I'm fine with moving forward with this.
Okay.
And this is Mike again. You know, I, I appreciate that you've been working for, you know, 10 years or something on that tour, or that was, but I guess maybe it was Doug. But this is the first that I've heard of it. I mean, maybe I've been up here, but has anybody else heard of this plant before this has been brought to us on this agenda?
Commissioner Boyle, this is Doug Cook. There, last April, the Planning Commission and this county board approved a batch plant at the location that's listed under agenda item G.
Doug, was that presented as a temporary batch plant at that time? Is that what the document said?
It was temporary, because the rates at that time, or, and as they presently do, say the plant can only operate 180 days, and that they should only operate 12 hours per day.
Okay, so that's what we approved, and suddenly this has evolved more into what could be, looks like, a permanent plant operator. Is that not true?
That's not true, because, and, and again, we're confusing items F and G. So, if I could go to G for just a second, the Planning Commission did recommend-
When you have that on the county, that has the county attorney, she has the office to talk about those things, because it's not before the public, I believe. Okay.
Well, Commissioner Boyle, you're the one who just said they're both intertwined.
I know I did, Sarah, but, but I'll tease, who said we shouldn't be discussing those. So, I just thought, you know, Doug's the apparent one being shut down by the county attorney, but I'm all for discussing them both together, that's what I think that should be, but I think there's some effort to squelch that, so, go ahead, I don't care, I couldn't discuss them both together, I'm all for that.
Well, we have, and, and I'm hoping that we're about done discussing, that we can wrap these public hearings up. So, is there anything else, any other comments under the zoning text amendments request?
Well, I think Doug wanted to say something.
No, this is Doug, I'm, I'm good.
Thanks, Doug. Okay, I thought you were asking Commissioner to speak about the next item. Go ahead.
Okay, I-
Well, I'll make a motion right, so when you close this hearing, I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, I am going to close the hearing. I would remind, Teresa suggested that the motion be made by people present in the room.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that at all. Why would that be? Am I, am I half a county commissioner now?
No, no, Mike. Teresa, do you want to-
Sure, I'll, I'll explain again, no problem, so.
And can you speak up, Teresa? You're, you're very difficult to hear. I'll turn off my microphone.
Sure.
This is, this is Dan Ash. Teresa's coming over right now to speak.
Commissioner, can you hear me? Is that better?
Your client, Teresa.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much, CJ. Teresa, your county attorney's office. I mentioned earlier in the meeting, this board is meeting physically here in the room. There are four commissioners present for quorum. And for the public hearings, there are some statutory requirements. So, it is legally preferred that someone who's physically present here would make the motion in the second. I think arguably for the prior items that were under consent, it is the board's own rule about the motion in the second, and it could be argued that the board, by its course of conduct, relaxed its own internal rule for those items, and allowed commissioners not present to make the motion in the second. But for the public hearings, it's not the board's own rule that, that talks about how the public hearing should be conducted. And so, it would be better, from a legal perspective, if someone who's physically present made the motion in the second.
Why is that? This is, why is that? May I add to that question?
Well, I'll take one of them as an example, if I may. So, the Craig University that was on previously, they had, they needed to conduct a public hearing. That public hearing had to comply with some federal laws, TECRA, I believe, for the conduit issuance. And so, the public hearing needed to be conducted pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. This board and I are going to have a conversation following this meeting about the board moving forward under the Open Meetings Act in the future for its future meetings. As it sits today, this board is conducting a in-present, physical, open meeting. Therefore, the more conservative approach would be to have compliance with the Open Meetings Act, and for the public hearing, that would be motion and second by someone physically present on the board.
So, the quick answer then is that the Open Meetings Law requires, we've got to cut through all the other legal stuff. The Open Meetings Law requires that a person be present at the board meeting to make a motion, is that what you're saying?
Close, that's close. It's not just the Open Meetings Act, that is a major part of what I'm saying, yes.
And if I, and if I could, could I please ask you not to respond so quickly, because we'll live up on the telephone after the punches start to execute, actually, listening to what you're saying, and sometimes quite a bit of it is gone, but, is that the answer? That the, that the Open Meetings Law requires us to be present to make these certain motions, or all motions? Now, hold off just a second until I get my phone set down, just a minute.
Okay, so, under the Open Meetings Act, when the board has a meeting, like we are now, you're physically present, it should be the, the board here that is voting. And so, I have had Dan Ash. Go ahead, and here's the short answer, and then I can go longer if you want. The short answer is yes, Open Meetings Act is not the only consideration. Okay, that's the short answer, and then I can go into a longer answer if you will.
Okay, I don't, I don't like the word consideration. What I'd like to hear you say is the Open Meetings Law requires that a person who's making the motion, maybe you've heard the motion, that a person making motions has to be present at the meeting, not on the telephone. And can you, can you hold off, because there is a delay that, that works, and just count to about five, and then start answering in just a second? Thank you.
I've provided you my answer.
And I'm very sorry, I didn't hear you answer. Just say it again, and really close to the mic, just sorry, I'm very sorry, just a moment.
Commissioner, the short answer is the Open Meetings Act is one of the considerations. Due to the Open Meetings Act, and the fact we're conducting public hearings, legally the preference would be that those who are going to make a motion in the second.
You know, that's not a good answer. The preference, if that's what you said, I couldn't hear you well, but if you talk about consideration, what I'd like to know is that it does the Open Meetings Law require that motions be made by persons who are present. I'm sorry to break this out, but using legalese like consideration, all that sort of stuff, muddies it all up. So, tell me very clearly, just say yes or no, after a slight delay, please. The Open Meetings Law requires those making motions to be present, not on the telephone. Now, hold off for just a second.
Commissioner, I've provided you my answer. I will give you more legal advice in executive session. I will not get into that legal advice in this open meeting, but I will be speaking to you in executive session on the parameters of the Open Meetings Act.
Well, I'm very disappointed, because I have to go before we go to executive session. I don't like being shut down, particularly by someone who works for us. So, I really am very disappointed in your inability to answer a question clearly, because you've shrubbed it in words like consideration, which, you know, is kind of a legal cheap shot, that, that's an attempt to, to shut my question down, and I frankly don't appreciate it. So, you need to be responsive to my question. This has been ongoing, and suddenly, when you're unwilling to make any response in public, you poke it like you're going to just do this in executive session. I'm very disappointed. So, I am making, and when this meeting is over, let me know, please, Mr. Chairman, and the exception of the meeting, of this item. Thank you.
Well, I'm trying to close the public hearing, I was leaving it open for you. So, if that is the end of questions and comments regarding item F, I will indeed close the public hearing now.
Motion to approve.
I make a motion to reject.
Second motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, and a second from Commissioners Borgeson and Rogers. Questions to, to that. If not, Mr. Clerk, I would like to call the vote.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle?
Okay, I had to go back and forth with you, and I'm mucking it. I, I'm sorry I broke this up there, but I, you know, as a commissioner, I did have polish, and I'm sorry if I kept you primed on or something. But, what, what is the, so, just a bit of motion, I made a motion to reject, was there not a second?
There was no second, and we have a motion to approve with a second. And that's what we're voting on now.
That's my turn to vote, and I vote no.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Board present voting yes, Bureau voting yes, Commissioner Boyle voting no over the vote.
Thank you. We will move on to item G, which we've kind of already touched on quite a bit, but we will officially open now the public hearing for a special use permit request by G and G Manufacturing for a temporary asphalt batch plant. Doug Cook, is there anything further you want the Board to know about this?
I guess, or, I'd like to, I have a short staff report, if I may.
All right.
You, Mr. Chair, this new application, not a renewal, for a special use permit request for a temporary asphalt batch plant filed by G and G Manufacturing, was initially heard by the Planning Commission in February, then held over to March. At that March meeting, the Planning Commission voted four to one to recommend approval of the request with the conditions. Page eight and nine of the presentation, the proposed temporary asphalt batch plant is an approximate 12-acre tract on the southeast corner of 264th and West Center Road. Other uses adjacent to this intersection are an RV storage lot across West Center to the north, a fast food restaurant and gas station to the northwest, a quarry directly east, and the former Pizza Hut Restaurant across 264th Street to the west. Page 10, zoning of property is agricultural. The zoning matrix lists a construction batch plant in the agricultural district as needing a special use permit. Page 11, the comprehensive plan shows the area as agriculture and flood planning, which is in green, and resource extraction, which are the diagonal lines. Page 12, the site plan showing the layout of the operation as provided by the applicant. Page 13 is the posted special use permit sign. The entrance here off of 264th Street is the only entrance into the property. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this special use permit request with the following conditions. Page 14, county health requirements be followed for portable toilets. And number two, daily operating hours are limited to 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Page 15, truck route maps to be provided to the Environmental Services Department. Number four, all lot lights shall be directed to keep lighting to the property. Page 16, the operating timeframe for this new special use permit request shall be from April 1st, if weather permitting, to December 31st, 2020. The Planning Commission recommends approval with those conditions.
Thank you, Doug. Is there any, is there anybody that would like to address this board concerning this issue during this public hearing?
I, I guess, Commissioner, Steve Buckner, Fisher Striker, 409 South 17 Streets, and I'm appearing on behalf of a citizen taxpayer of Douglas County wishes to be unidentified. I will not repeat the comments that I made on the prior agenda item, other than recognizing that this is a public hearing for this particular agenda item. I will mention briefly a few points regarding this request for a special use permit. First point, this request is for 274 days approximately, so-called temporary special use permit, almost one year. The prior regulations, which have now been changed by action of this board on the prior agenda item, only a temporary batch plant for a period of no more than 180 days. And there's no provision in the proposed special use permit that would prohibit this temporary, the so-called temporary use from continuing on and on and on, all without requiring this applicant to comply with the, with the, the permanent batch plant requirements that are in the zoning regulations, and further, which would prohibit a temporary batch plant from being located in this particular area of Douglas County. What creates a huge loophole, which is allowing this applicant to operate what in effect is a permanent batch plant located in an area that's not zoned for general industrial, and in fact is prohibited from any further uses such as a batch plant unless and until there are full municipal services, which there are not, which is completely contrary to the comprehensive zoning plan of the county. And the zoning regulations themselves, section 55, 768, state that, that temporary uses shall not be allowed to take on the, I quote, "operating character of permanent uses," close quote. That's an existing regulation, and without further restrictions in, in this temporary, or, excuse me, this special use permit to assure that this will be temporary, that it will be limited to certain construction sites that are in relative close proximity to the plant, and not give this applicant the unlimited ability to drive construction anywhere and everywhere by turning a temporary plant into a permanent plant, it simply is not appropriate from the standpoint of good planning practice or consistent with the comprehensive plan or the zoning regulations, specifically section 55, 768. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckner. Is there anybody else that would like to address this group during the public hearing?
Mark, is it Tony Potoff with Constructors Inc.? I'd like to address the group, if I may.
Uh, what, what was your last name, Tony?
It's Potoff, that's P as in Paul, O-T, T as in Tom, H as in Harry, O-F-F as in Randy.
All right. Fine, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to, thank you, I just wanted to just comment on whether this plant is truly temporary or permanent. The physical nature of this plant is 100% portable. There's no permanent foundation. The control house is portable. There, it essentially is a, it's a large piece of equipment that produces asphalt. And it's common in this state that these portable plants are moved to different sites to produce asphalt for whatever projects come up within that time period that, that plant is at that location. This plant really is, is just, our intent for this application is temporary in nature. We, like I mentioned before, we moved this plant from location to location as the work that led, I mean, to the county's, like, Douglas County, Nebraska Department of Transportation, et cetera, and they let work, we moved this plant to where, where we get that work. Are there any other questions to, to the physical nature of this plant or the operation that I can answer?
This is Mike Boyle, I have a question. Mr. Potoff, where was this temporary plant before it was at this location, and for how long was it there?
We moved it physically, you know, and I can only think about what we've done in the past. Before this, when we were near Auburn, before that, we were near Virginia. I would say in the last three years it's moved, now I don't have all the locations in front of me, but I'd say probably five times. We're really just indicated by- We're really just indicating by what works out in the area, so it'll stay in the location as little as three months, as long as a few years. It's really, you know, we don't decide what works being let in a specific area, so it's there to serve those projects as needed, and then we'll move it if we don't pick up any additional project.
Okay, so when you were in Auburn, at Plotonia, were you there, as you just said, for a few years, or were you only there for a few months?
A few months.
And that was probably driven, what, am I correct, by the contracts to construct roads, is that correct?
That is correct. And asphalt, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I would just, I think important noting, in the state of Nebraska, it's coming back for the contractors that install asphalt to also produce it, it's not readily available like concrete is. So the vast majority, if not all, state highways, county roads are produced and installed by the same company, asphalt is produced and installed by the same company.
I understand that. I'm just curious, when you used the word, the phrase, for years, so is it your intent to leave it there for years, or as long as you have projects, which one is it, or are those exclusive, I mean, you could stay there for six months and then nothing's going on, so you take it to Council Office or someplace else, or, you know, wherever, but if the work continues in Douglas County, do you intend to leave it at that site, is that correct?
If there's, if there's work, yes, we intend to leave it there, although I would like to note that our lease agreement with G and G Manufacturing is temporary in nature, that their plans are that site, although there is a ground pit adjacent to it, also owned by G and G, our lease agreement is temporary. And our intent at this time, I can tell you that as to my knowledge, at this time, we only have one project, that may be two projects built out of this plant, and then we don't have any future projects at this time beyond this year.
May I ask, if you're willing to answer, do you have the right to renew that lease? And if so, for what period, did you know?
You have the right to review it on a year-to-year basis. G and G Manufacturing has the right to terminate it, given six-month notice at any time.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that, Mr. Potoff, thank you.
And I would add that the permit that we are considering only runs through the end of this calendar year, and so if they wanted to stay longer, it would have to come back for our blessings before they could, I believe. So, further comments regarding item G during the public hearing? If not, I am going to close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion from Commissioner Borgeson and a second from Commissioner Rogers to approve item G. Questions or comments to the motion? Mr. Clerk, could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle?
No.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one, four physically present voting yes, two over the phone voting yes, Commissioner Boyle over the phone voting no.
Thank you. We move on to item H, our final public hearing, adoption of the 2018 International Residential Code, coming from Environmental Services. Doug, is this pretty routine? I'm hoping.
Given the day, Mr. Chair, to sum it up, this board does, has expressed that we, the county, adopt and follow the same code as the city. The city adopted the 2018 International Residential Code earlier this year, so the Planning Commission recommends adoption of the 2018 IRC as amended by the City of Omaha.
All right, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anybody wishing to address this board about this item during this public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing. What is the?
Motion to approve.
Motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
I think I made the motion to approve, excuse me.
Commissioner Boyle makes the motion, Commissioner Rogers seconds.
She doesn't want, she wants people in the present to make the motion.
I'm sorry, I can't hear real well, can you put it on, I made a motion to approve, was there a second?
There, yes, there was. Should we have the motions from here, you've already spoken to this.
I have, and I'm sure that the record reflects that Mary Ann and Commissioner Boyle made the first motion, I've never seen such a thing, but if you wanted to do that, you could, second by, quite frankly.
Okay, we, so, so we have the motion made simultaneously by Commissioners Boyle and Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle?
Excuse me, I agree here, now is this a simultaneous motion, or was my motion?
Yeah, it's recorded as simultaneous.
I need to know.
It is recorded as simultaneous, you and Mary Ann both made the motion at the same time.
Now, that's, that's pretty extraordinary, I've never heard that before.
What's your vote, Mike?
Claire, keep the patience, you're losing your cool.
Okay, what's your vote?
Please, I, I'm very curious about this, because I've been told that I can't make a motion, and that's why it's important.
What is your vote? What is your vote? We are calling the vote.
Well, if I may, this is Dan Ash County Clerk, I mean, on the resolution, I'm gonna say the motion was by Commissioner Borgeson, the Roger, the second was by Commissioner Rogers, and certainly in the minutes, I will indicate that Commissioner Boyle also made a motion over the phone, but I'd rather keep it to one person on, on each motion.
Okay, there you go. Mike, what did you vote?
You know, I, I am going to declare myself a unique, I'm not permitted to make a motion over the phone, that's what this is all about, so I vote that I declare myself a unique.
Okay, I don't know if being a unique means yes or no, I'm asking you for the fourth time, would you please vote?
Unique.
Okay, okay.
Present, not, or?
Present, but a unique.
No, no, I'm, I'm a unique, I'm not allowed to make a motion, I'm a unique.
And you're not voting, is that correct?
I'm, no, I'm voting, I'm a unique. My vote is a unique. I've never heard of this before, I would have never, I cannot imagine why a board should be allowed to vote by telephone and not allowed to make a motion, I'm just stunned by that, so I am declaring myself a unique, Mr. Chair.
Well, you can call yourself anything you want, I wish you would vote, but apparently you are unwilling to vote, so we will move on to.
I am, Mr. Chair, I am voting, I demand that my vote be recorded as a unique.
That's not a vote. That's not a vote, Commissioner, please continue the vote with people who are actually willing to vote.
I am voting, and you have no right to say my vote is, that's unbelievable, you're declaring that I don't have the right to vote.
A vote is either a yes, a vote is a yes, or a no, or an abstention, not I'm a unique.
Well, I will, I will do.
Well, I'm not able to make a motion, so I'm making a unique.
All right, real quick before we move on to Commissioner Kavanaugh, similar to what I did with the motion, I will, Commissioner Boyle, just be consistent with them, the past, when you've made unique motions before, or answers, I'll, I'll put you as not voting, but I will put in the minutes what you have, what you've stated. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes with six yeses, four.
One unique.
Present. Two over the phone, and Commissioner Boyle not voting with his statement.
Okay.
I'm a unique.
Thank you.
You can put that in the public record.
Uh, and.
It will be.
Thank you.
Moving on to the committees, I, anything under child and youth service, Chris, that you want to bring our attention?
No.
Okay. I, no legislation particularly, is that a safe assumption? So I bring us, brings us down to item G3, Resolution to Adopt the Civil Service Commission Infectious Disease Outbreak Rule as Revised.
Is there anyone on the phone?
It.
Diane, yes. Hi, Diane Carlton, Deputy County Administrator. Item three is a resolution to adopt with the Civil Service Commission, adopted last week at their meeting. This is a revised version of their infectious disease outbreak policy, and the civil service rule applies to civil service employees. And by the board's adoption today, it would be extended to apply to non-civil service employees as well.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Second.
I made a motion to approve.
Uh, we, we have a question here, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And Diane, maybe you could dispose of this real quick. Our two resolutions here, we're on the first one, regarding, I guess this is for.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I cannot hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now, can you hear me now?
Hey, hang on, Commissioner Kavanaugh, can you please remind people to mute their? Yeah, just another reminder for folks to mute their phone if they're not speaking or answering a question, thank you.
Can you hear me, Diane?
Yes.
Okay. So there's G3 and G4, and I just wanted to make clear, the resolution, G3, Adopting Civil Service Commission Infectious Disease Outbreak Rule, and G4, Resolution Adopting the Civil Service Expanded Family and Medical Leave Act, an emergency paid leave rule. Do these overlap in covering all of our employees? The, there seems to be a couple of different classifications here, and I just want to clarify that we're treating everybody pretty much the same.
Could you hear that, Mike?
Well, the item three is a general policy dealing with infectious outbreaks, and it applies to all civil service employees, and I, the board's adoption today, it would apply to non-civil service employees under the board's authority. Item four is also a civil service rule, that, it's the same thing, it applies to all civil service employees, by the board's adoption, it would apply to non-civil service employees under the board's authority. But within item four, the policy does define what an eligible employee is, and so there are some employees that are eligible for some of the benefits, and other employees may be excluded from some of those benefits depending on their job.
Okay, so these basically expand these rules from just covering civil service employees to covering non-civil service employees as well, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the excluded employees, if, I, I see that in, is it in four? The list of excluded employees?
Yes, so within the document of item four, there is excluded as eligible employees who are working for our Health Department, Health Center, as well as emergency responder type employees, such as Sheriff's Department, 911, Youth Center, and Douglas County Department of Corrections. This is all based on federal legislation and definitions provided by the federal agencies to interpret these rules. And so the county has, I believe for the most part, patterns, its policy on the federal legislation that was just passed very recently, and that HR and the county attorney's office has been diligently worrying about and placing in a policy. So this is, this is the policy that was adopted last week. I will say that, you know, changes may be made if necessary, if there's changes made by the federal agencies, but at this point, we've tried to put together our best understanding of what the legislation means for our county.
Okay, so this is simply to bring us in compliance with the expanded federal medical leave act on the federal level?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions?
We just had a motion for number three, is correct.
Correct. So we, we have a motion from Commissioner Borgeson and a second from Commissioner Rogers on item threes. Questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Morganson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle?
Although I'm a unique telephone here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero, four physically present, three over the telephone.
Thank you, this brings us to item G4.
Motion to approve.
Second. This is the resolution adopting the Civil Service Expanded Family and Medical Leave Act that we just discussed, we have a motion to second, questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero, four physically present, two over the telephone.
Thank you, this brings us to the end of our regular agenda. We have need for an executive session, we are not going to be doing it in this room, we're going to go up to room 903 for the executive session. Mr. Ash, I'm gonna, I hate to do it, but I'm gonna ask if you'd stay here, because we'll come back in here to.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you, you're gonna come back.
To reconvene. You don't want to have to go to a quick.
May I ask, may I ask a procedural question?
Sure.
Do I stay on this phone, or am I in or out of the executive session?
Allocation of resources and security and things of that nature related to COVID that we're going to discuss.
So allocation of resources, including but not limited to personnel.
Yep. So at least those three.
All right. Can everybody hear that? The, the executive session is being called for litigation, legal advice, and allocation of resources and security. Okay, all right. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session at 12 o'clock for those purposes, so move. Motion in the second, that we have a 12 o'clock executive session on litigation, legal advice. advice, and allocation of personnel and security. Uh, and then we will come back into this room to reconvene and adjourn. While we are still in public session, I, I have one quick final announcement to make. Uh, meeting in this room is less than desirable, and it's not anybody's first choice. We will be waiting for the next county board meeting until March fifth.
May fifth.
May, May fifth, thank you, wrong month. Uh, May fifth, four weeks from today, at that time, we can move back into the legislative chambers. That's the first Tuesday that the LC will be available, so the county board's next meeting will be four weeks from today, back in the LC. Now, what?
I'm new here.
Yeah.
There is a calendar invite now sent to Commissioner showing the call-in number.
Okay, you should have a, an invite with the call-in number for the executive session, we will reconvene in five minutes, or not reconvene, but we need to vote first on going into executive session.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Kraft, you still there? All right, just skip, Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes, uh, six people voting yes, four over the phone, or, excuse me, two over the phone for present, physically present, and Commissioner Kraft is, uh, not present at all.
Yeah, Teresa's not here, so yes.
Well, I mean.
You know, I should have picked that up, I read it.